Get in this meeting now. So we'll start tonight with approval of minutes from our last meeting.
The move we approved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor vote aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, tonight, public hearing items. Our first item is 3.1, Application Z-1907 and P-1933A. The first is Application Z-1907 filed by Jeremy Forshee on behalf of JLF Properties LLC. This is a request for a change in zoning district classification from RS, which is residential suburban, to C6, heavy commercial. This is a one-half acre tract of unplatted ground on the north side of Beverly Drive, west of Broadway Boulevard. This property is known as 1430 Beverly Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are two companion items, a rezoning request and a companion application to plat what is today an unplatted tract of ground. And the property that is the subject of this application contains a single-family dwelling located on the north side of Beverly Drive. And it appears that construction of the dwelling predated annexation of this area into the city. Our building records indicate that the house was added on to and a garage was built in 1961. And most of this area lying between Beverly Drive and West Crawford, west of Broadway, was annexed into the city during the 1950s. While this property is not part of a platted subdivision, it's bordered by subdivisions on the south, the west, and the north. And to the south, we have the Eisenhower and West Haven additions. The Vanderbilt addition is located to the west along Beverly Drive. And then to the north is the Park West addition, where we have a number of contractors' offices and storage buildings on the south side of Armory Road. Those were not developed until the 1990s. This property is, however, zoned residential. And the two lots directly to the east were given that same designation in 1977, and the zoning has not changed since that time. So, the map you see on the screen shows you the zoning pattern for the area. The property directly to the west is C6, and this is all industrial up here. This I2 is for a monument company that has been there historically, and the industrial zoning was needed for the monument company. Then you have residential, and then you can see on the map, everything south of Beverly Drive going down to Crawford is part of a solidly residential district. So, the applicant, in this case, purchased this tract of land in February of this year and is requesting the rezoning of the property from RS to C6. The plan is to remove the existing dwelling and garage and to construct a commercial storage building similar to the buildings to the north on the south side of Armory Road. The C6 zoning is being requested because, one, allows construction of commercial storage buildings, and then, secondly, the adjoining property to the west is zoned C6, so this is a requested extension of that district. Although the property to the west is zoned C6, it appears that it has historically been used as a residential dwelling, but the applicant believes that the dwelling on this property is no longer suitable for residential use and that the property is more suitable for commercial use. One of the things we've done is identify what the purpose is of the C6 zoning district. And just to give you an idea, that if the request is approved, all permitted uses in the C6 district would be allowed on this property. This includes contractors' offices, auto service and repair in addition to commercial storage buildings. The other thing we want to point out, that is, in a C6 district, the outdoor storage and display of goods is allowed. In this case, the lot width and depth exceeds the C6 minimum standards, and we just want to point out that for parking, parking is going to be based on the actual use of the building. If it is just a storage building or warehouse, then there's one parking space for every 2,000 square feet. If there's offices added, such as a contractor's office, then it would be one space for 300 square feet of floor area. There's not been anything submitted to staff that would indicate the size or location of the proposed building. We are talking about commercial zoning, so front yard landscaping would have to be provided along the Beverly Drive frontage. And then, any time we have a commercial district that abuts a residential district, then we have a requirement for a landscape buffer and some form of solid screening are required. So, for example, at the intersection of Iron and Ohio, that building is close to being ready to be occupied, and on the west side, there's a 15-foot buffer strip behind the building and then a six-foot solid fence, the same as the case with Exchange Bank. At Cloudon, Ohio, where it abuts residential to the west, there's a requirement that when you have commercial development next to residential, that that buffer and solid fencing be there. We did want to point out that C5 is a much more common zoning district than C6. C6 is being requested here because there's already a C6-zoned area there, but there are about seven uses that are allowed in C6 that aren't allowed in C5. And one of those would be agricultural, implement sales and service, amusement parks, animal hospitals, automotive repair, equipment sales and rental, including heavy equipment, lumber yards, and manufactured home sales lots. Those are uses that are allowed in C6 but are not allowed in C5. So, I think if you've driven the neighborhood, or if you've driven from Broadway along Beverly Drive, you can see that it is a mixed area, especially the north side of Beverly Drive has a mix of uses. And if you go from west, or from east to west, you start with C5 at Broadway, then it goes to I2, then it goes to RS, then it goes to C6, and it goes back to R2. And then two properties that are zoned planned, C5. So, it's kind of difficult to describe the predominant character of the north side of the street. The south side is predominantly residential. And so, we have a situation where the applicant is not interested in rehabilitating the existing dwelling or rehabilitating the lot for residential purposes, and contends that it's not a desirable home site. As we noted, there's no real trend on Beverly Drive. The mix of zoning uses has been pretty stable. There's only been one new dwelling constructed in the area in the last 30 years, and that's across the street at 1507 Beverly. And that was a lot where a home was torn down and a new one was built in its place. Of course, there is sufficient land area here to construct a new site-built home or even a residential design manufactured home. But, we would agree that the north side of Beverly Drive is not a very suitable or attractive location for new residential development due to the industrial-type development to the north on Armory Road. So, the question for you this afternoon is whether you think this property is more suitable for continued residential use or conversion to commercial use. And again, the character of the neighborhood is mixed. The area to the north is zoned residential, and there's a whole mix along the north side. And the north side lots are deeper, and because they're deeper, that's encouraged several small businesses to establish locations on that side of the street. We have received comments in opposition to the proposed zoning change from owners and residents of 1443, 1503, and 1507 Beverly Drive. And so, these would be properties that are on the south side of Beverly Drive facing that property. And one of the respondents indicated that they're worried about the safety of children playing in the neighborhood, because there are already additional vehicles and people causing congestion on the street. They're comparing this to the storage, the mini-storage facility that's behind Baird's Cafe, and they are not wanting to see more traffic on Beverly and not wanting to see another mini-storage project. And so, the, those are concerns that have been expressed about traffic. And one thing we want to make clear is that although the stated intent is to build a commercial storage building, C6 allows what C6 allows. So, when you have C6 zoning, there is nothing that prevents a use from changing to another use. And so, two examples in this area, there was a day-old bakery store at Beverly and Duval. That was purchased by BFR Metals, and they're using it for a different use now than the day-old bakery store. And there was also an auto repair business on Beverly Drive. It has been converted into a church, but some in the neighborhood think that the church has more of an impact on the neighborhood than the auto repair business did. So, what we want to explain is if you make a favorable recommendation, you will be extending or expanding an existing C6-zoned area, but you would be permitting or allowing what C6 allows. So, what you should focus on is whether the nature of the development the applicant is proposing is compatible with the development in the surrounding area, and if it would generate negative impacts. As far as public utilities and services, that is pretty neutral. We already have water, sewer, electricity, natural gas that serve the dwelling, and that's not really going to change. There's a well-established drainage pattern that drains to the west, and the water ends up in this old cutoff channel here, which is the old West Dry Creek Channel. Then it goes underneath the flood control levee over to the new Dry Creek Channel. One of the things that staff determined when we were doing research for this report is that Beverly Drive is classified as a collector's street. It's not a residential or local street, and a collector's street is one that is anticipated to carry more traffic than a residential or local street. And it carries about 1,400 vehicles a day north of Crawford. The property in question has a curb cut and a driveway that would probably have to be modified for commercial use. And while commercial storage buildings are a low-traffic generating use, the C6 district does allow things like automotive repair, which could have more traffic impact than a storage building. So, what we have is a border area between residential to the south and employment area to the north in the comprehensive plan. And so, that's what makes cases like this kind of a difficult decision when it's in a transition zone like that. So, it's not purely residential, and it's not purely industrial. So, as we looked at this, the north side of Beverly Drive has historically had mixed use. There's only two recent, if you want to call them recent zoning cases, that have gone before the planning commission. One was farther to the west, where a vacant lot was rezoned, Plan C5, to allow a commercial storage building. The other one was the former Moose Lodge, which was actually also zoned RS, residential suburban, because it was unplatted. And the planning commission approved a zoning change to Plan C5 for it, to allow it to become an events venue. And so, those are the only recent zoning changes on the map that have occurred in this area. So, Beverly Drive is a collector's street because it carries a higher volume of traffic than a typical residential street. So, really where this falls down to is it's a judgment decision for you as to whether the north side of Beverly should be protected from further commercial expansion. And our observation is, the applicant's stated purpose is to construct a commercial storage building, but there are other uses allowed in C6 district which could have a greater impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So, as we consider this case, here are the alternatives that we've come up with for the commission. One would be to recommend approval of C6 zoning as the applicant has requested. The only commercially-zoned land in proximity to this site is the adjacent property to the west, which is zoned C6. The primary drawback to C6 is that the applicant or future owner would not be limited to using the property for storage. If you zone this C6, it could be used for the sale and service of heavy equipment or automobile repair without further review. Or, in the case of the 1506 Beverly, we had a auto repair business which transitioned to a church, and both of those were uses permitted without further review. You could recommend conversion of this application to planned commercial, PC6, with uses limited to indoor storage of vehicles and equipment or to storage only. This alternative would permit the applicant to achieve his stated intent while prohibiting the use of property for other commercial uses. The applicant would need to submit a site plan showing the proposed location of the buildings, driveway, and fencing, et cetera. And so, a limited use of other commercial uses could be considered for approval as well. What you would need to do is find that concurrent consideration of a site development plan is a relevant factor in your consideration of this request, and that planned commercial zoning is needed to ensure compatible land use relationships with surrounding development. So, if you chose that option, it would require the applicant to amend their application and to submit a site development plan for either concurrent review or deferred review. Third option would be to recommend that this application be postponed, allow the applicant or staff to provide additional information. Your fourth option would be to deny the requested zoning change to C6. That would be based on your finding that continued residential use of this property is feasible and desirable for the surrounding neighborhood. As we've looked at this, some may say that this isn't really an area where you would expect to see your find planned commercial, but the only option that staff can see that would satisfactorily address neighborhood concerns while allowing the applicant to pursue his plans would be a planned district approach, because the planned district allows you, as a commission, to recommend a short list of uses. So, the planned C5 district for the former Moose Lodge, the only use that the planning commission approved was an events venue. So, it can't be a convenience store, it can't become a service station, it can't become any of those uses without coming back to the planning commission for review. So, while planned districts can be viewed as more of a burden on the applicant, that's the only option we can see that both addresses neighborhood concerns about open-ended zoning and allows the applicant to pursue their plan. So, with that, we are open to any questions about the zoning request or the difference between straight C6 zoning and planned C6 zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. The C6 that's to the west, how long is that a C6?
From what we can tell, in the late 1970s, when this area was remapped and rezoned, and all we can, all we can think of is that Mr. Terry Ord, who owns Ord Automotive, I think owned all this property at one time, and it was, there was an auto repair business, and it was zoned C6. These, this is part of the Vanderbilt addition, and these lots are also part of the Vanderbilt addition, but they are zoned R2. And I don't know, does the, this map is cut off, so it doesn't show anything to the west, John? Okay. So, right over here in this location, there was a zoning from, rezoning from R2 to Plan C5 for a storage building. And then, over here is the former Moose Lodge, which was rezoned to Planned C5 for an events venue.
And what are the requirements for commercial storage buildings?
It depends on whether we have a classification of use that we call non-climatized storage that we have a number of people in the community pursue, and they want a big storage building to store their antique cars or store things that won't fit at their home address. So, they essentially build a building, and that building has no restrooms, no heating, no air conditioning. It is what you'd call non-climatized storage. So, when you build that, that's the simplest building that you can build. It doesn't require handicap parking, it doesn't require plumbing or any off-street parking at all, for that matter. And that is what we call non-climatized storage. And that is, that is what our definition of a storage building would be. We also have some storage buildings where somebody wants to work on things or have a workshop within the building, then they put in a restroom, or they put in an office. Then they're required to have parking, and we address those things. Landscaping is required regardless of what the use is, but a, what we would call a non-climatized storage, the only thing you can use it for is to store pallets of material or to store antique vehicles or things of that nature. So, when we describe a use as a storage building, it's when usually an individual owner wants to store their personal belongings in that building. It's not what we would refer to as a mini-storage or mini-warehouse. It's, it's one building owned by one owner with one, one entity's item stored there. It's not a commercial mini-warehouse or mini-storage like you have to the east behind Baird's.
So, if the commission determined that a planned C6 was appropriate, when would determination be made about the specific uses that could occur in that particular project?
What the, the new process that we had when we were considering the request for Popeyes, it was the planning commission that initiated the amendment of the application from straight commercial to planned commercial. And that process is now set up where if you think that planned commercial is the most appropriate designation for this property, that would go to the city commission, was a recommendation. If they agreed, then the next step would be for the applicant to submit a site plan and come back to you with that site plan. And at the time that that site plan was considered and it was a planned district, then you could recommend, we would, and we've provided it in this report, but we would say- recommend, we would, and we provided it in this report, but we would say, here's all the list of C6 uses. You make a recommendation whether one, two, three, five of those should be permitted. And you, it could be as limited as one, it could be as expansive as the entire list. But there's, there's two elements that distinguish a planned commercial district from a straight commercial district, and those two elements are, you can, you are approving the location, size, type of building, and you are also approving the uses that can be approved as part of that district. And so in the case of the former Moose Lodge, the planning commission only approved one commercial use, and that was as an entertainment venue. And if somebody wanted to come back and convert that to something else, they would have to come back before the planning commission and amend that.
So in addition to the restriction to usage, where do things like ability to store things outdoors fall into this? If we would say, for example, that you can do this at P6, he comes back, we agree that it's outdoor storage, or that it's a storage building only, for example, can he still then store things outside the building?
Not if the planning commission makes it a condition of approval. If you want, if, in a planned commercial district, if you want to approve a plan with a condition that there be no storage outside the building, that is within the planning commission's discretion.
Because didn't the, the, the project is, this map isn't very large, but just to the northeast would be the building where we allowed the storage, outdoor storage should be erected, right? Behind, or south of Kmart?
Border states, yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And you allow, you allow it outdoor, you approve.
Y'all know where I'm at, so.
Yeah, and I don't know, John, do we have the GIS active where we can look at that?
Adjacent to housing, fortunately.
So what that was, what is referring to, which does not show up on this map because it's new, but it's the former food pheles here. It was a planned commercial district, and they submitted a plan for creating a fenced-in outdoor storage area in this area. And so you reviewed that plan and you placed limits on its location and its size and all those types of things. But in the case of a planned commercial district, you can address storage, you can address lighting, you can address drainage, you can address landscaping, you can address a number of, of things. The, there is a planned commercial district for the former Green Lantern, now Casey's at Crawford and Ninth Street. And as part of that planned commercial district, there were hours of operation when the car wash could be used. There were, there was a requirement that certain specified mufflers had to be put on the vacuums that were behind the car wash because it was in the backyard of residential. There was limitations put on lighting, a number of things. So there, there's a whole menu of things that you can address through a planned commercial district that can't be addressed in conventional zoning.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
Are storage buildings allowed in C3, 4, or 5?
They're not allowed in C4, and they're not allowed in C3. They are allowed in C5, C6, and we have a number of them in industrial zones.
So why did the applicant apply for C6 when he could have applied for a C5?
Because staff recommended that he apply for C6 because if he applied for C5, it would be probably construed as spot zoning. And so C6 being next to an existing C6 makes the most sense from that standpoint. That doesn't mean that you have to approve a expansion of the C6 district, but there is, if, if you just took a lot here and said, we're going to make this C5, it's, it's not associated with any other C5-zoned area, so that would be, you would be spot zoning a C5. So that's, C6, if there's anyone to blame for that, it would be me because that's what I recommended.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Good?
Is that area in the area of change?
It is, yes.
But I would assume it would be long-term before the housing on the south side changed.
Right, at least it's in the plans.
It is, yes, it is. And logical choice would be commercial, but I think there's the issue of protecting the other neighbors. Anyone else with questions for staff? No? Great. Then is the applicant here? Sir, if you'll approach the podium, please. I need your name and address.
Jeremy Forshee, 330 East Main, Essaria, Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. Forshee. Do you have comments you'd like to make?
Well, I just think I want to clarify to make sure what we're asking for. I mean, we're looking to build, I'm going to use a, throw a name out here, Morton-style building. Size and footprint has not been, because we kind of wanted to see how this meeting went today. We'll definitely get on top of getting a site plan if we feel that we're moving forward with a building over in that neighborhood.
So it's been explained to you about planned versus straight C6?
I believe I understand the difference on the planned commercial, yes.
Are there questions for Mr. Forshee?
What do you plan to use the building for?
We plan to use the building, we own and operate many rental properties in Salina, Kansas, probably 17, 18 just in that neighborhood. It'd be nice to have a building instead of using other vacant rental properties to store all of our stuff in. We'd like to have a building in the neighborhood to hold our materials and work out of, and it'd just be nice to have a central location in Salina, Kansas. And we felt that this was a good neighborhood. It's already got a building beside it. I know there's, there's houses, but it's kind of a mixed use over in there.
So you wouldn't be going in and out constantly all day long?
I hope not.
Would you be looking at having plumbing and heating and cooling there with a workspace or just cold storage?
I think move, I, I believe we plan on using, using it not as a cold storage, but, you know, go ahead and hook utilities up to the building.
Other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, so are there other people that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Would you please approach the podium? I need your name and address, please.
I'm Joe Sanders, 1503 Beverly Drive, and I am chist, trying to get my directions here. I'd be chist south of the proposed site, right across the street from him. I'm right across from what is now the church, or Mr. Ord's property. I'm against it because, again, being the C6 designation, we don't know what's going to be there five years from now, 10 years from now. Also, right now, there is a lot of traffic on the road, and there is no sidewalks, and there are kids and adults walking up and down Beverly Drive at all times. So if there's going to be a big influx of traffic, I would not be before that. There's a couple areas, again, this property is right across from us, the church. There are several cars that's parked there 24 hours a day. So to me, that in itself is an eyesore. Also, the old bread store that's being used for some type of storage now, there are trailers parked around that. That's on the corner of DeVal in Beverly. So to me, there's enough in the neighborhood now. And there ought to be other, some other options in that area on North Broadway or somewhere where they could build a new facility or whatever without constructing it where they propose.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
I'm LeBlanc, 1420 Beverly Drive. I'm more concerned about the backyard drainage, but you more or less explained that it's supposed to go west, not east. Most of that stuff from Armory Drive rolls right back on me.
Right.
And I'm going to fix it where it goes directly to Beverly Drive, or, I'm not going to hold it in my backyard and pump it out.
Sure, no, I totally.
Well, this is a bad year.
Right.
But that trucks across the street there on that corner, I didn't think you could have those trucks parked on the curbs like they do. You can, a lot of times, they'll almost plug the stop sign up.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back if you have discussions or questions. I had one question for staff. Mr. Andrew, you made the statement that there were people in the neighborhood that felt like the church was a greater impact. I wasn't sure if you meant that, could you just clarify what you meant by that?
Well, the, and Mr. Hirsch went out and looked at the site, and he can explain it, but the, the auto repair tended not to be open on weekends, and it did not have a lot of vehicles there waiting repair. But apparently the, there is a bus and there are other vehicles associated with that church operation, and it was a relatively tight fit to get the necessary parking that needed to be provided for the assembly space at that church. So we just wanted to inform the commission that when you have, I would venture to say in 1977 or '78, when the Ord's auto repair was Zone C6 because it was an auto repair, that if you are in a C6 or C5-zone area and you go from one use to another use that's permitted in that district, that those things can change, and there's no, there's no notice, there's no hearing, there's nothing that occurs there. What staff does is that it looks at a situation and looks at something like this and says, well, if it's auto repair, you have to have X number of off-street parking spaces. If it becomes a church, you're going to have to show that you can expand the parking to this. But it also goes to show that it is not prohibited to have outdoor parking or storage of vehicles, but we have, we have received more comments about vehicles parked or stored at, at the church than we had when it was an auto repair.
Thank you.
And so we just, and you are certainly aware of it, but anytime you're talking about a rezoning for commercial use, there's usually a use that the applicant has in mind. We just want to remind the commission and everyone that we've given you a long list of uses that are allowed in C6. And so when you zone a property C6, any use that is on that list is allowed by right as long as you can meet the other requirements.
And if the commission determines that a planned C6 is more appropriate than C6, how, what's the timeframe for the applicant to bring back a site plan?
What we would do is that we would, your recommendation today is already put on the city commission's calendar for July 8. So whatever recommendation you make, whether it's approval, planned commercial, denial, except for postponement, would go to the city commission. If they, if it were denial and they agreed with the denial, then this would remain residential property. If it was approval and they agreed with your approval, then that would move forward for an ordinance changing the zoning to C6. If it was planned commercial, then what would happen is that we would see if the city commission agreed with your recommendation. If they did, we would get with the applicant, we would work with them to prepare a site plan showing location, size, type of building. We would take that plan, we would send notice to all the neighbors that you as a commission are going to consider that plan at this meeting. And we would have another public hearing like this focusing on the location, size, dimensions, and setbacks and all of the building, and also look at the appropriate uses for the property. So that, those would be the steps in the process. If you recommend approval of straight C6 zoning or denial of the C6 zoning, it is likely not to come back here. If you recommend that this be converted to a planned C6, then we would work with the applicant to develop a plan for how he's going to site a building on there, what type of building it would be, and that would come back before this body. And we would also notify Mr. Sanders and Mr. LeBlanc and all the neighbors to say, this is now what is being proposed, and you are welcome to attend a hearing and offer your comments.
Thank you, sir. Neighbors, you understand?
So, yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to speak to the, the question of the, when we spoke to that there is a good draining system for Beverly Drive, that is correct. Is there a good draining system for Armory Road? The answer is no. And so I know Mr. LeBlanc and some of the other owners on there have had to deal with an ongoing situation where the rear of these lots on Armory, the water doesn't get out to Armory, and it doesn't seem to go this way where it should. It seems to go back here in pond. And so when we're stating that what we have is very large storm sewers in Beverly, and there's a 72-inch box culvert right here that dumps into this area here, the problem is that this water back here gets trapped and doesn't get out to that system. So if we work with the applicant to get positive drainage out to Beverly, that will be a good thing, but it's not necessarily going to cure or address Mr. LeBlanc's ongoing problem of runoff coming from the back of the buildings on Armory and going into his yard.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Comments? Discussion?
I move, we recommend conversion of the applicant to a planned commercial PC6 with the limited indoor storage of vehicles and equipment. With the, with their application, they submitted a site development plan for current, concurrent review as part of their rezoning request.
I second it.
Thank you. It's been moved to recommend conversion of the application to planned commercial C6 with the applicant submitting a site plan. All those in favor, vote aye, please. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
So as, as we stated, what will occur with that recommendation is that that will go forward to the city commission on Monday, July 8. At that meeting, the city commission can either concur with your recommendation or do something in the alternative. If they agree with your recommendation, then we would work with Mr. Forshee to prepare a site plan for development of the site, and then we would schedule that to come back to this body. So as to item- So as to item, um, 3.1B, which is the plat, our recommendation would be that the planning commission, that you not, that you defer action on that until there's a resolution of the, the zoning question on the property.
Thank you.
Because there is, um, until, until we know whether this is gonna be a planned C6 or a straight C6, we would recommend deferring, um, action on the plat until a site plan for the property comes back to the commission. So that, that would be our recommendation for a motion on item 3.1B.
And do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
It's been moved that for item 3.1B, that application P1933A be deferred until decision is made and a site plan is presented. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Forshee. That would bring us to item 3.2, which is application CU19-7 filed by Chase Wheeler, requesting approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate a tattoo parlor and body piercing studio in the C4 Central Business District. This would be located at 117 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application for a conditional use permit to allow a tattoo parlor and body piercing studio in our C4 Central Business District. And the proposed location is a building that's addressed as 117 South Santa Fe. As our staff report indicates, that the, the original commercial structure in this location was built in 1886 and it has transitioned through a number of uses, but probably most recently would be remembered as a long-term home of the Smile-A-Minute Camera Store. In 1995, a new owner, Mr. Mike Henry, rehabilitated the upper floor into a two-bedroom loft apartment and that was really one of the first lofts conversions that we had in, in downtown Salina. And they added a substantial wood deck with stairs at the back of the building overlooking the alley. Most recently, this building has been a toy parade, Jack and Jill Salon, and was last occupied by Connected Affair Trade Store. The storefront is currently vacant. And so the applicant in this case is interested in leasing this ground floor storefront space for a tattoo and body piercing operation. This tenant space has 25 feet of frontage on Santa Fe. The floor plan drawings indicate the business will have a reception desk, a waiting area with couches, tables, and chairs in front of the business. A tall counter will separate the waiting area from the tattoo procedural areas. The tattoo procedural areas will have folding partitions for privacy. An equipment sterilization area and two restrooms would occupy the rear of the building. Tattoo shops or parlors are regulated by the state and there is, there is a licensing process for that and we have provided information about that in your packets. The proposed business would operate as the True Love Tattoo Shop. Your role in this case is to evaluate the proposed use of the property and determine whether that use in this location would be compatible with surrounding uses. And so this process is designed to allow you to receive public input about and establish appropriate conditions for approval of the proposed use of this tenant space. So, um, we had a brief period of time where tattoo parlors were identified as simply a prohibited use in the Central Business District. In 2011, the planning commission recommended approval of a text amendment that moved them from the prohibited use list to the conditional use list. And essentially designates you as the planning commissioner for filtering out which locations are appropriate and which locations are not appropriate locations for tattoo parlors. I think you're all aware that C4 District allows a broad range of retail uses. It allows buildings to extend to the street to cover 100% of a property. Does not require businesses to provide their own off-street parking. So as far as the welfare and convenience of the public, this request would allow an experienced artist to establish his own business in this location. The applicant states that he has worked at the Iron Avenue Tattoo Parlor for four years. Prior to that, he worked at another location. He's been a licensed tattoo artist since 2013 and he desires to establish his own location. So we have a floor plan that was submitted with the application. No new facilities or alterations are proposed to accommodate the use. The business would operate from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesdays through Saturdays. And so this, this would be a Santa Fe storefront that's accessible and visible and it will put a vacant tenant space into productive use, could potentially increase customer traffic in the downtown area. The question for you today is whether filling in a vacant tenant space with this use would contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. The applicant believes that this would draw more people to downtown. A large amount of his clientele comes from out of town. Those people can also shop and dine in the surrounding areas. There will be no view of the activities from the public sidewalk or waiting area. And one of the things that has been discussed about using the conditional use process is just to, it's a means to prevent the over-concentration of certain types of uses in one area. And we've provided examples of things like pawn shops, vapor lounges, payday loans, massage parlors, things of that nature. That all fall into that category. If this is approved, this would be the second tattoo parlor in the downtown area. We had one pawn shop across the street that's now closed that the planning commission approved. And we have one vapor lounge on East Iron that the planning commission approved. And we have no payday loan companies downtown because they are prohibited. We have no massage parlors downtown because they are prohibited. So there should be no impact on public utilities and services. The applicant's not provided to provide their own parking. And so we have laid out four options for you. Approve the conditional use. Approve the use subject to certain specified conditions or any revisions to the plan that you think are appropriate. Postpone consideration or deny the application if the required findings cannot be made or if you think that this use will cause injury to surrounding properties if approved in this location. We have, um, given you an extensive list of possible conditions of approval and those conditions have been, um, what we would call standard conditions that have been put on the tattoo parlors located both within and outside of the downtown area. So with that, we would note that we did provide notice of this hearing to the Salina Downtown, Inc. and for the Board of Advisors to see if they were gonna take a position on this and we did not receive any formal feedback from Salina Downtown, Inc. So they have not taken a position on this application that we can provide to you at today's hearing. So with that, we're open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Commissioners, do you have questions?
You talked to Downtown, Inc. that that was one person? Did you talk to any of the adjacent stories?
We sent notice out to the owners of everyone, every property owner within 200 feet of this storefront. And we sent notice of this to Penny Betels, who's the executive director of Salina Downtown, Inc. And to give her an opportunity to see if her board wanted to provide any formal input and we did not receive anything back to put in your packet or to report at today's meeting.
Okay, we also had some complaints about the, uh, Tattoo Parlor on Iron Street about people loitering outside the building. And could there be any restrictions placed upon this applicant to, to prevent that?
We could. It would have to be, what we would want to report is that there is jo- no general, there's no prohibition between either what would be described as loitering or smoking on a public sidewalk. And so there are, there are other businesses downtown where you could have employees go out and smoke on the sidewalk or, um, loitering. But if you wanted to address that, that would have to be added as a additional condition. Way that we have addressed that with the Iron Street Tattoo Shop is worked with them to try to persuade them to find an alternate area for smoke breaks and things like that that is not on the public sidewalk. But it was not. There were no, there were no conditions and, um, that particular conditional use permit on Iron was approved once, expanded once, and expanded twice. And we have worked with the owners about that ongoing, but that was not, there was no restriction on that or there was no condition of approval. But if that's something that you feel needs to be addressed, then the appropriate thing to do would be to add that as a additional condition of approval. So we, we have 13 identified, or 12 identified, but you would need to add a 13th condition that dealt with that.
There's a back entrance to this building?
As far as we know, yes. I'll defer to John on that. Is there a back entrance, John?
An alley.
There is a back entrance, but it's an enclosed courtyard. So there, there is a, a door at the alleyway where that courtyard extends out and has a six-foot fence across the back. And that, that's a product of an earlier use when the top floor was used for a loft apartment and that was their exit.
Thank you.
Do we have any photo of the back, John?
Uh, fairly, I don't.
You said you, I'm sorry, you don't? Okay. Are there other questions? Mr. Wheeler? Would you please state your name and address?
My name is Chase Wheeler. I'm, uh, 121 North College Avenue here in Salina, Kansas.
Thank you. Do you have comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, um, as far as the loitering would be upfront, as far as smoking goes, the back patio area, it is enclosed. To get in through that back area, they have, um, a keypad. You'd have to have a secure code, so it would be pretty well employees only. And that's where I would have my employees, if they were to smoke, is to do out behind my business instead of out in front of it because I myself, I don't want them out front of there doing that either.
I, I was under the impression that it was friends of customers on Iron Street that were loitering, quote, loitering in, in front.
It was both customers, friends of customers, and employees who were taking breaks. It was a combination.
But you were here for that discussion, I remember that.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So obviously you understand the position here because we heard those comments and we heard those complaints.
Absolutely. If it's something to where I could, um, have a customer, an employee, um, smoke back there, I could definitely make that an option or a rule for my establishment. As far as their friends go or people just general that ran them by, it is difficult to control some people and some you don't always want in the back of your business because you would have to go through all of that area as well. But if it's going to be your artist or a customer that's already there for a procedure and going to be there for an extended period of time, then the back patio would be, uh, the most viable option.
Did you have other comments?
I've been here for a long time in Salina. I've worked downtown. I used to design and print for Bear Promotions in my early twenties. I was an electrician. I did a lot of electrical work for a lot of these downtown buildings and the streets on Santa Fe when they needed the Christmas lights to go across and we had the lights that went across. That was actually me, that was up there running all of that electrical work for those Christmas lights. Every time that they've done bowling pins downtown for the children, I've always painted or carved one for them. I've worked Iron Street Tattoo for the last four years and helped them make a really good name for themselves and myself as well. I'm definitely looking forward to, as a Salina local, expanding and providing a great, well-lit, inviting atmosphere for my fellow people in this community.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Wheeler? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Are there others who would like to speak or have questions? Mr. Burney?
I'm Abner Burney. 101 Overhill Road is my residence, but I own three properties within the CID, Star Bonds Downtown Redevelopment Area. And I'm concerned that the, the whole, in that whole project, the redevelopment of Santa Fe in particular, is that it all relies upon the collection of sales tax. So my first question is, are your services 100% sales taxable? Are your services sales taxable? Do you collect sales tax as a piercing, body piercing and tattoo parlor?
We do not.
That's what I thought. I would think that it would, that this may be a little tenuous, but that...
Okay, hold on just a second, Mr. Burney.
My comment...
I'm gonna need you to speak into the mic, so you're, you'll need to wait, please, and then you can address the questions he has. Thank you.
Well, the, the answer I, well, go ahead if, if you would like to answer the question for the recording.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood you, but...
Well, my question is whether or not your services are subject to sales tax and whether you...
Yes, I do have an EIN for my business, a business account, LLC.
But do you collect sales tax for the services?
For each transaction, it's all figured into the price.
So you are collecting sales tax? Okay.
I mean, I have to pay taxes on them, yes, sir.
You do pay it into the state?
Yes, sir.
Every month or quarter? Okay, so that's what was unclear because I couldn't fi- I couldn't find whether these were taxable services or not. But at any rate, my point was going to be that, uh, that we do need to be encouraging sales tax-collecting businesses on Santa Fe. The newest things in the last couple of years have been insurances and financial advisors and nursing services, none of which collect sales tax, yet the whole project hinges on the collection of sales taxes. But at any rate, in this case, I have no objection to the use.
Thank you, Mr. Burney. Thank you. Well, I'm glad I moved my real estate office off the block. Hopefully it'll be replaced by someone who collects sales tax.
For the benefit of the commission, what we have is created is what is called a CID or Community Improvement District. And within that district, additional sales tax is collected and that sales tax goes towards paying off the bonds that were sold for the various streetscape improvements and projects and things like that. So what Mr. Burney is saying, that it is beneficial to the community and it was actually a project that Dustin and I worked on where we had to identify all the businesses that were currently within that Community Improvement District and notify them. And just for Mr. Wheeler's benefit, the, um, what the State Department of Revenue has indicated is they've held meetings to educate people on the collection of that sales tax. But what the state has indicated is they're, they're going to withhold and remit that additional... that additional sales tax, whether the merchant collects it or not. And so it's very important that merchants that are within the CID know that there is what, calculate what the correct sales tax is. And the Department of Revenue has come out to Salina and held meetings. But why that is important is that the incremental addition in sales tax in the Community Improvement District is used to pay off the bonds that were sold for that streetscape enhancement that you see going on right now. So that is the connection.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Purney. Anyone else? Your name and address, please.
David Nichols, 333 West Beloit. I'm here solely as an advocate for Chase Wheeler. And everything seems to be going well, so maybe I should just sit down and be quiet. Anyway, I've never been one to do that. You know, history is replete with examples throughout the world of body piercing with different cultures and tattoos. Somewhere along the line, it became a stigma in our society for a person to have a tattoo. You know, only sailors and marines, which I am, have tattoos. But that's not the case anymore. You look at high-profile individuals like athletes, you know, especially basketball players, college and professional basketball players. Tattooing is becoming a very accepted practice these days. I've known Chase since he's 11. He's very talented, very intelligent, very compassionate. You know, he's been involved in charitable things. He was part and parcel of putting together a big semi-truck full of relief supplies when they had that bad tornado down Moore, Oklahoma, a number of years back. Now, he does things like that because that's the way Chase is. And in keeping with that, he takes really good care of his clients when they come in for a tattoo. He will actually educate them on how to properly care for that tattoo and maybe even their desire to put it on a certain part of their body or a certain tattoo. You know, I can't go into the specifics of that, but I know he does some of that stuff. I think personally that a tattoo parlor downtown would be extremely successful. Because gone, pretty well gone are the stigmas of having tattoos. Almost everyone that's younger than me in my family, including my wife, has a tattoo. My daughter, my son-in-law, both, both our sons, and actually, we have three sons, they all have tattoos. So I'm just here to advocate for Chase, and I think it'd be a good deal to have his shop downtown.
Thank you, sir. I'm a little confused over the statements that we have no other tattoos parlors downtown.
No, the statement is that we have one other tattoo parlor.
Right. On page five, it says there are no other tattoo parlors located within the C4 Zone downtown area. Is that just incorrect?
No, that is not factually correct, and that escaped your proofreader, so...
Well, I noticed it earlier.
The second sentence says, the question is whether the addition of a second tattoo parlor would negatively change the character.
Okay, because I'm like, am I just like mistaken here that we approved another one not that long ago?
No. It is the staff report that is mistaken.
Okay, okay. I just thought I was crazy for a moment.
What the statement was supposed to say is there are no other tattoo parlors located on Santa Fe within the C4 Zone downtown area. That's what the sentence was supposed to say. But it is, the only tattoo parlor within the C4 District today is the one on East Iron. There are other ones in remote locations outside of downtown, but the one on East Iron is the only one that is located in the downtown.
Thank you for clarifying that. Anybody else?
My name is Nick Granton. I live on 886 Custer. I've lived in Salina for almost four years now. I immigrated from the Netherlands. I believe that Chase Wheeler's Tattoo Parlor would be a great addition to the Santa Fe storefront. Just as the other gentleman specified earlier, it would be great when it comes to the sales tax and everything, so I was just wanting to let you guys know that I'm here to support that motion.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Ashley Wheeler, 121 North College. I just, I wanted to address his customer service and work ethic. A lot of his, he's known for his customer service. He's just really good with his customers, and he's got good relationships with his prior businesses that he's worked at in tattooing. And as far as his talent, when he had to forfeit some appointments, they, rather than get their deposit, they followed him to where he was going, miles away, so they could get tattooed by him. So I believe it would bring a lot of business. And as far as sales tax, I thought about merchandise such as T-shirts, piercing, et cetera. That could also draw revenue, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Chase Wheeler, 121 North College.
We know who you are.
One thing I would like to point out, though, is that you cannot see one tattoo shop from the other. So if we are worried about congestion as far as downtown goes, we aren't terribly far from each other, but from one store to the other, you will not be able to see the other, so that's a, may be a good thing for you.
Thank you.
I have a question, too. John, could you show that, the floor plan? No, all right, well, the counter and wall, how tall is that wall?
That's the front counter. That'll be a four-foot wall.
That picture, yes. How tall?
Four foot, sir.
So where would the tattooing take place in that picture?
Back on the opposite side of that wall.
You mean the counter or the wall?
Of the counter.
So that would be visible from the street, then?
Excuse me?
It'd be visible from the street.
Oh, we will have partitions that we put up, but they're ones that are accordion-style that move, that way we aren't building any further walls.
The one on East Iron, they use curtains instead of accordion walls. But in the case of the other tattoo parlor, they have a similar counter, and then they have a curtain that can be pulled that's behind the counter for the actual procedures. So this is similar to that, except it has accordion walls instead of curtains.
And on the list of recommendations, number four, wall window posters depicting tattoo art shall not be visible from any public streetscape, right? I mean, we wouldn't be looking at those walls of tattoo drawings all over. Is that how that works?
Yes, there would be, they could be inside the store. It's basically referring to the window storefront, that the window storefront not be plastered with art depicting...
Depictions of tattoos.
Depictions of tattoos on the front windows. But within the walls of the store or waiting area, whatever, that doesn't address that just being visible from the passerby on the sidewalk.
And business hours are 11:00 AM, why not 9:00 AM?
Most people aren't comfortable getting tattooed at nine in the morning. They like to wait until they've been up for a while. And especially if you get towards the lunch hour, when people have had an opportunity to eat, you have less chances of them, you know, having fatigue or anything like that. That, and as well as when people get off of work, you know, it's just, my business is when you're off of work, and so that's when I have to make sure that I'm available.
Any other questions for Mr. Wheeler? Mr. Bappa? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any last thing to say before I close the public hearing? Not, I'll close the public hearing.
I have moved that, is this the time?
This would be the time.
Okay, I moved to approve conditional use permit 19-7 with the following conditions, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 12. Do we need to add 13? Or, I know we talked about the...
You know, we've discussed it the last time around numerous times, and what we determined was that we had the provisions in here for contacting the police if there was some issue. And that we cannot control the public on side activity on the sidewalk from conditional use permits.
The main way to address that is the way that, you know, Salina Regional House Center, people like that, Salina Regional House Center says, if we have employees and they smoke, they can't, they can't smoke on the Santa Fe sidewalk. That's a work rule. So the best, the best way to address it is to let the employer address it through a work rule. We believe.
Quick question on the hours. Is there a reason it's limited to 8 o'clock?
Not necessarily. That's just was part of the application. So there's, there is, I mean, you, you can, if you want to have a time at which you think it should, I guess the idea is that so it's not open till 2:00 AM or 2:00, 3:00 AM or something like that, you can decide something that's more appropriate.
There are residential units all around there. There are people that live above and around.
Right, but down the street at Blue Sky, they're open until, what, 10 o'clock?
Probably, probably later than that.
What is open?
Blue Sky's open past 8 o'clock. I mean, they've got residential above it also. I mean, I didn't know if that was from the planning commission or if it was from the applicant.
That was from the applicant giving us an indication of what their planned hours were. But if you want to give them more latitude, you can do that. You can even, if you, if you want to have, if the maker of the motion even wants to delete condition number one, that, that can be deleted. That is, that is there for, if the commission wants to address that. I would, I would point out that when the city commission first approved sidewalk cafe dining downtown, they required that the cafe on the sidewalks close at 10:00 PM. And the current city commission amended that to, say, 12:00 AM. So those, those things do get modified. So your choices would be to extend that to some later period or to, if, if the maker of the motion wants to amend their motion, you can take out any business hour limitations if you so choose.
I'd probably take out any limitation and leave it to the employer.
So I don't think your, I don't think your motion has been seconded yet, so if you want to amend your motion to approve with conditions 2 through 12 and omitting condition number one, then that, that is an option.
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application CU 19-7 with 11 staff recommendations, one being removed from page six of two pages. Any discussion? All those in paper, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries also. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
We will get you a letter summarizing the approval today, just so you have it in writing.
And that would bring us to a legislative matter. Number 3.3, Application Z 19-5A, which is filed by the Salina City Planning Commission requesting amendment of Sections 42-503 and 42-504 of the sign regulations. This is to clarify what types of signs are and are not allowed to be located in public right-of-way and the amendment of Article 14 of the Salina Zoning Ordinance definitions by adding a definition for government sign.
So the, what we're trying to work with the planning commission on and staff is trying to develop is a, I don't know if, if John can get the draft text amendment put on the screen for us, but if you could do that, John, that would be helpful. But what we're trying to do is take our current code situation where we essentially only have two exceptions to the general prohibition on signs in the right-of-way and expand that. And so we, we have items. The first item is things that you would expect to see in the right-of-way, which is a traffic sign. The second item there is, which we have photos that we'll show you, but we've had desire, and in the downtown area, used to have vertical banners that hung on light poles or utility poles in the downtown area. They had banners for spring, banners for summer, banners for fall, banners for winter that they hung on the light poles. The banners got faded, some ripped, and they didn't have money to replace them. We've had interest from downtown merchants and others to have decorative flags out on First Fridays or other events downtown. Our problem is that when we drafted our, and approved our code for temporary signs, we allow things like feather flags, but you can't place feather flags in the right-of-way. And in the downtown area, all the spaces outside the building are in the right-of-way. We have had bus stop benches and shelter signs installed. And we have recently approved an agreement, which I believe the first one is in place at Kansas Wesleyan, but these are bike-share docking stations for a fleet of 50 bikes that can be rented or used to go from place to place that are bike-sharing. And then under five and six there, those are exceptions that already exist. If you walk down Santa Fe and you go to the Stiefel Theater, you'll notice a very large marquee sign that extends out over the sidewalk. And that is an example of a type of projecting sign that can project over the public sidewalk. And we also allow downtown businesses to put out sandwich board signs on the sidewalk on, only in the downtown area. And then we also have signs that are put out for wayfinding or directional signs. So, John, I don't know what we have on our slideshow in the way of photographs. I'm not seeing it here on the program, so do we have any photographs? Okay. So we're going to quiz the planning commissioners, and you're going to tell us whether the sign is permitted or not permitted.
Do we get a reward?
It depends on how you score.
Well, we'll score correctly, of course.
That's not...
Not.
That sign is put out by the city, but under city code, it is not permitted.
As many times as we've done these, all you better all have an answer for these things.
It's a wayfaring sign, isn't it?
We've been doing this for four years.
No, the, the sign up above, and this would be addressed through our code amendment, the sign up above is a wayfinding sign, but it's also a permanent sign. And it's also a sign that meets the Uniform Code for Traffic Control Devices, like a speed limit sign or other signs. The sign below it is a temporary sign. And we have a city code that says temporary signs are not allowed to be placed in a public right-of-way. So those of you who said not permitted, that was a correct answer.
Thank you. One now?
I thought we had approved open house signs.
Not in right-of-ways.
Not in the public right-of-way.
Okay, all right.
Well, apparently not, because they're all over town.
Well, that's what we are trying to do, but we're, we're just using this to educate. So this is a OCCK City Go Bus Stop. That is a bench. The benches are approved through an agreement with the city commission. And those sites are approved. The city cooperates with putting the pads, and many of these are donated. But the question is, you can see the sidewalk. The area behind the sidewalk is private property. The area from the back of sidewalk to the curb is public right-of-way. Is this sign permitted or not permitted under the... Is this sign permitted or not permitted under our sign code? Not permitted.
Not.
Okay. So now we go to the next one, John. Similar situation across the street, not permitted. And then we, I'm not sure if you have, are there any other photographs, Dustin, or is that, are we just doing bus benches and others? Okay. So, John, there's, according to Dustin, there's other photos in there.
Come on, let's get to the garage sale ones. Please. And the political signs, we haven't seen those yet. And real estate signs.
So Dustin, within this range that's up there, do we have your photos in there or not? Okay. Well, that's barely visible, but. Okay, that's a better view.
Still a no.
I think there's a trend here. The answer is no.
There is a trend, yes.
Yeah, if you haven't all figured that out.
Is there a regulation they have to leave them out till the wind blows them away?
Well, what our, and we don't do it because we don't generally have employees working on Saturday, but what we have is we have a, I guess, they call it that, so I can call it that, is a signed jail. A signed jail. And so what, what will happen is on certain select Saturdays, a team of city employees will go out and collect up these signs and put them in signed jail and then let the owner know that they can be recovered. But what we're, we're, what we're trying to articulate is that we have to be consistent and we have to be consistent, again, that we're content neutral. And so staff's concern is that it is, it is not, it's not a good practice to say that we're going to remove the garage sale signs or other types of signs and then have the other ones. So what, what our proposed text amendment would do is that if the city of Salina adopts a program and we have a, a code that says for select community events, wayfinding or directional signs can be put out in the right-of-way, we can write our code that way. If we want to allow bus stops and shelters to have signs, we can make that an exception in our code if it is essentially speech that's sponsored by the government. So we have kind of put that draft together. It is in the hands of our city legal counsel. They have requested additional time to work through that. We've, we've put this outline together and just want to explain that the primary concern is that under our current city code, we, every photo that we showed you there is not permitted. There are potential ways to make certain of those signs permitted if they are tied back to or characterized as government-sponsored speech. And so we can have government-sponsored or allowed bus stop benches. We can have government-sponsored or allowed bike-share stations. And we can have a program that allows banners for certain community events or things of, of that nature. So we've tried to, we've tried to construct that. And so we are just not in a position where the city attorney has ratified any of the, these things that we have structured this correctly. So we wanted to use this hearing to educate you on the concern. And the concern is that we, we, we treat all signs in the right-of-way as equal unless you, as a planning commission, recommend and the city commission adopts certain specific exceptions. And so our concern is that it's not very, I mean, it's a fair question to say, why would you be out enforcing garage sale signs when you're not enforcing it on the city's own signs? And that is a fair question. And that's what we're trying to fix. So we had recommended in our staff report that to allow legal counsel additional review time, that this, any consideration on this item be postponed to the July 2nd meeting. We're now would modify that, that we would recommend that the public hearing on this item be continued to your July 16th meeting to allow the city's legal counsel to, to draft a text amendment for discussion and consideration. So we've given you an outline there of what we're seeing. This is another example of those are there. We think that the code can be modified to allow for this type of thing, but having some time, place, and manner and size limitations. But what we're trying to do is get our, our code adjusted to reflect what we want to see or not see within the right-of-way. But it, what we're saying is that having a code that says signs in the right-of-way are prohibited except for traffic control signs means that these types of things are technically not allowed under our sign code. And that's, that what we're trying to work with you to see what exceptions you want to carve out. So at this point in time, based on our dialogue with our city attorney who's helping us, our recommendation would be to continue the hearing on this item till July 16th so we could have something a little more meaningful for you to discuss and vote on.
So am I hearing you are trying to, to address each of the scenarios that you showed, including?
We are trying to address each of these scenarios. That's what our draft is intended to do.
Including garage sale signs.
Not including garage sale signs.
Okay, that's what I, everything but.
It's, it's on the draft amendment there.
Yeah, I was trying to.
Yeah, garage sale signs aren't included in it.
I'm, you may or may not be aware that when I discussed the, the downtown seasonal banners, they have donated all their hardware and banner, hardware to North Salina Group. And they're proposing to put decorative banners on power poles and light poles on North Knight Street. Barb Young is spearheading that. We've had a meeting with her. We're trying to get this, our code, to catch up with what people are wanting to do and what the community may desire to see. And so if you want to say yes to some and no to others, you need to have the code to back you up. So that's, that's what we're, we're working on. And so we're just not there yet to have a fully fleshed-out proposal for you to make a recommendation on yay or nay to this or that. But that is every one of those exceptions that we, we identified. And this is what we're seeing is we have interest in the community in having signage on bus benches. Then we need to address it. We have interest in the community of putting banners in the public right-of-way on power poles. We need to address it. And so the way to address it is to say, these are allowed, but we have size limits. We have, you know, you can only put them on 20 poles, not 55 poles. You can put it within this area. If we want to have decorative flags and flag holders out along the curb on Santa Fe, then that's permitted, but it's not permitted on Ohio Street. So those are the kind of things that we have to work through. You, as a body, need to advise us if we're on the right track as far as these exceptions go. But we don't think having the status quo of our current, current code, if planning commission thinks that's a desirable thing for the community, then we need to adjust our code to make allowances, so. But not garage sale signs.
I think that sign would be acceptable and also the signs in, for North Salina would be.
Yes, and we're trying.
How do you exclude a merchant from putting up a sign like that?
What you do is you have a government-sponsored light pole banner program and then you have ground rules in that program that says decorative signs or banners are allowed, but advertising is not.
Well, that's an advertising sign right there, though. That's not government.
Well, it would not, it would not necessarily be considered as my definition and the code's definition of an advertising sign is if North Salina Community Development put up 10 banners on poles on North Knight Street and they had a business sponsor each of the banners. And each banner said ABC Corporation, XYZ Corporation. Those would be advertising signs and not banners. But if they put up banners that have autumn leaves or snowflakes or welcome to Salina, that is not an advertising sign. That is a decorative banner. And so that is why the city attorney is involved. That's why this has to be skillfully and artfully put together that essentially if you have a government-sponsored program for decorative banners, then the government can decide what they say or don't say. And that would apply to bus stop benches. That would apply to all those things. So.
Yes.
I move that the public hearing on this item be continued to the commission's July 2nd meeting.
July 16th.
We want to give them more time to July 16th.
16, okay. To allow the city's legal counsel to draft a proposed text amendment for commission discussion and consideration.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that this item be postponed into the July 16th meeting. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any administrative items?
There are no administrative items this evening.
Discussion items?
We don't have any preliminary discussion items. I think you, last night at the city commission, they voted to authorize the use of special assessment financing for the remainder of Stone Lake Edition. If you're familiar with Stone Lake Edition, that is out at Schilling in Ohio, the northeast corner. And when it first started in 2013, there was like one house built that sat there for a couple of years and nothing else really happened. And now there's 34 lots in the first phase and it's, all lots are spoken for or under construction. So there are new, new buyers, new developers, and they're looking to more, move forward with expanding more lots in that area. There's two things that we, or three things that we shared with the city commission last night that I will share with you. In 2018, the city issued 27 building permits for new homes. That's the lowest number of new homes built in Salina since building permit records have been kept. There are now essentially 29 buildable lots that you could build a house on in the city that not, are outside of Highland Meadows, Hamlet, and River Run, which are higher-end subdivisions. And there are a total of 80 listings on the MLS listing for homes for sale in the $160,000 to $300,000 range, which is one of the historical lows for homes on the market. So we are experiencing a very tight housing market. The encouraging news, if you think that constructing new housing is, is positive, is that probably by the end of next week, we will have equaled the number of new home permits in 2019 that we issued in 2018. The concern is that we may run out of lots before, before we've exhausted the, the demand for constructing new homes. But just from a observational and reporting standpoint, the city is running very low on the supply of lots. It's not for lack of having plats. It's more through the fact that we have a number of subdivisions that don't have paved streets, water and sewer lines in them, which are necessary to allow development to occur. So, but there are 79 residential lots in the remainder of Stone Lake. And what the city commission voted to authorize last night was that for the developers developing in that area to utilize special assessments to get water, sewer, and streets in that area. So we are working on that. And then we are continuing now through October to work with our downtown arts and entertainment committee that has about 36 members. And we are, we take a new topic up every session. We've talked about alcohol sales and consumption in the downtown area. We've talked about mobile push carts and vendors. We've talked about street, public street performers. And this next meeting, we're going to talk about downtown aesthetics. And that will also include things like colorful banners and decorative flags in the downtown area and what we need to do with our, our codes to allow that. But we're, the reason for that is that we want to be prepared when the streetscape project is done and we're, we want to see more street activity and street life in our plazas and streets and sidewalks. And so we're working with this committee to make sure that we're not, that we're making allowances for things that are going to increase activity on our, our streets. So that's kind of an update of what staff has been working on behind the scenes.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. It's a public forum, but I don't see anyone here. So anything else?
Yes. You, you did say three things that you wanted to bring to our attention.
Well, the three things were, one, the lowest level of building permits since records, that we only have 29 buildable lots. I had a phone conversation with a couple from Wichita. They were looking to move to Salina, buy a lot and build a new house. And they made the observation to me that there's only one subdivision in the entire city where they could buy a lot and build a house. And that is correct. And one of the things that consumers like and that we should be able to offer is choice. And so we should, we should be able to offer, you know, multiple locations, multiple price choices, which school district people may want to live in. And so one of the things that we're not able to offer people right now is choices.
But the population is declining.
Well, that is being widely reported. My observation, having participated in the 1990, 2000, and 2010 censuses, was that the state of Kansas, which does interim population projections, each of those decades has projected a decline in Salina's population. And each time when the population count occurs, Salina's population has grown. So just for historical reference, in 1970, the city's population was 37,000. And that was 6,000 people less than 1960 due to the closure of the Schilling. And that was 6,000 people less than 1960 due to the closure of the Schilling Air Force Base. It increased from 37 to 41 during the decade of the 70s. It went from, and it was over 42,000 in 1990. It was 44,000 plus in 2000. And it's over 47, almost 48,000 in 2010. So the state projected, was showing declines between 2000 and 2010. And then when the census occurred, the city had grown by 3,000. So things like utility connections, utility con, those types of things are increasing, not decreasing. So it just remains to be seen. We are certainly not growing at the rate that we used to because in the 1990s, the city issued more than 100 building permits for new homes every year. And it went from 100 per year to 27 per year. And so depending on your perspective, that's either good or bad. But one concern would be that if people aren't able to build homes in the city, then they're going to build them in the county instead of the city. And you can decide whether that's a good thing to convert farmland to subdivision. So...
When you say that someone calls and wants to know where they could build, is, are there any, does that include property that are within non-development areas that have a cluster, but just like a piece of property here, a piece of property there? Do you include those as choices?
Well, when we, what we did for our report is that we took the vacant lots that are on the Great Plains Board of Realtors multi-list site. And there's, there's 67 total on that site. And to be on there, you, it, no one's going to sell a lot that's not buildable. So we, we do have lots throughout the community that are paper lots, but no one could buy one and build a house on it because it doesn't have a road in front of it or it's not served. But there are scattered vacant lots around the community where someone could potentially buy and build a home, but they would not, not, not anything that would be a whole block or a, a neighborhood. And then, you know, one of the drawbacks of some of our in, inner neighborhoods is that the lot sizes are quite small. And so you have to be someone who's interested in doing something smaller or more creative. So there are scattered infill lots available, but I was, I was speaking to new, new or newer subdivisions that have been platted since 2000 that have vacant buildable lots. And that, that number is 29. And 15 of those are in the River Trail addition, which is north of Magnolia Road by the flood control lab. And so when the planning commission approved that plat in 2017, there were 42 lots in that plat. And 27 of those 42 lots have houses on them and there's 15 left. And that's actually, I was told, it's now down to 12 because I have three permits for new houses on my desk there that are in application form. So if those 12 lots all get used up, then if someone calls from Wichita looking for a subdivision that has available lots, I'm not going to be able to give them any. So that, that is kind of a snapshot of our current residential real estate conditions.
Anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
Parking lot maintenance, we talked about two weeks ago. And did you make any headway?
Our code enforcement person has been out, has made personal contact with Midstate Plaza, the owner of Galaxy Center, and with Central Mall. If those, we have the option of having them barricade those so people don't drive into them. But right now, we're just trying to get voluntary compliance. When I was out at Midstate, they had a whole set of crews and trucks out there for asphalt overlay that were gearing up to do some work. I can't say the same for Central Mall. And I'm not positive about Galaxy Center behind Kadoba. But I do know that, that Midstate, they have mobilized a crew that is ready to do some work out there.
Okay. And then in the area north of the Holiday Inn by Lowe's, is, are those roads private or, or public?
They are private.
So those could use some help, too.
Okay. You're saying that Ring Road where Rib Crib and those places are?
No, this, this is an East West Road.
The one that comes off the traffic signal at Knight Street?
Yeah, well, there's, there's, yeah, off the traffic signal, yeah.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll call that to their attention. But we have one person who's dedicated to going out and working with those owners to get those rectified.
And I'm also seeing temporary banner signs, which is, we don't allow, is that correct?
That is correct. If they're out on stakes and strings.
And if, if they're, just say a church, do you kind of look the other way?
No, because we, we, we cannot, we cannot do content-based enforcement. So it doesn't matter what it says. It only matters what it's made out of and how it's attached.
They're the ones that have them all on chain link fences where they're not supposed to be either. So...
But there are...
Because I've asked for three years for one to come down.
There are some that were on South Ohio, but those got self-enforced by the wind. And so they're, they're not there anymore. But you are, you are correct that there have been a number of those that have popped up. And the one that I need to address myself is the one that's on Magnolia Road for the Ark, the church that's on a residential fence that is not allowed in a residential area. And we've had some others of those removed there. They may put out a yard sign that advertises the Ark, the church, but not have that banner on their fence in a residential area.
Other questions, comments, issues, complaints? Not? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Okay.
Is that a motion, Wally?
Yes.
And Mona's?
Second.
Don't get too arty.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Did all commission members remember your homework item is to go around the community and look at for worthy landscape and curb appeal recognition projects?
I wanted to, once again, suggest Exchange Bank. I was going to email that, but I forgot it.
Yes. But if you either, if you don't provide it to us by email or, or give it to us at this meeting, then it's, it's not going to get recorded. So if you...
Please record Exchange Bank.
If you, if you have something and you're thinking about it and you want to shoot us an email to say, I think such and such should get recognized, then please let us know.
Thank you very much.